This conference will now be recorded.
5:30 Wednesday, August 26th, we'll be having a city council work session this evening on the is the City of Los Angeles 2021 budget update and Mr. Paul Lewis will be presenting this evening. I'll just turn it over to you and I appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council members.
Good evening, Paul.
Budget workshop. I know we've had a couple of workshops on the quarterly reports. We also had a workshop last month on your reserve policies. This is the next in a series of workshops that we'll be holding on the 2021 budget and I'll get into some of the specifics in a minute on the topics for the other workshops. But for tonight, I've got about 21 slides to go through. I wanted to hit up a little bit of an update on the current economic conditions. I've got one slide on the budget calendar to just highlight some important dates between now and the end of the year. The primary purpose for today's meeting is to preview what is really a very rough draft of the 2021 general fund baseline budget. And then in that context, present some information on some budget balancing options. And then close with a short subject on that next step. So any questions on the agenda? If not, I will start through with the economic update. So the Washington State Office of Financial Management publishes updated population estimates for each of the city and the state roughly June, and they cover the current year population estimates. And the City of Los Angeles population estimate came out was 3,705, a full 300 person population increase from 2019 or an 8.8% increase. In the origin to this graph, so the blue bar and the left hand axis is the population as of each of those dates. And then the red line in the right hand axis is the percentage change from year to year. So you can see since the Great Recession, the population increases been fairly muted, running below 2% the last couple of years. It's it's inch above that, but a full 8.8% increase this year. I've got a little table over here. You are the fifth fastest growing city in the state of Washington this year. So most of those cities are smaller cities that have experienced a large population increase similar to yours. And you can see your your friend up the road Ridgefield was it came in at number four, just a little bit ahead of you, 9.8%. And they're up to almost 9,800 population this year. In terms of employment, a couple of sort of highlights of the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. This graph shows you the employment. So these are the jobs that are physically located in Clark County. That's the blue bar in the left hand axis. It's employment that's covered by unemployment insurance. So it doesn't include the self-employed people or others. And then the right hand axis again shows you in the the line shows you the percentage change from year to year. And you can see a fairly, here's the drop during the 2008 recession, hit a low of 130,000. The peak in the end of 2019 or in 2019 was up to 170, so 40,000 jobs added over that 10-year period. And then you can see in May of 2020, a pretty significant drop down to 148,000 with a slight recovery in June. And the July numbers just came out yesterday. We added another 800 jobs and this is actually revised to 154.5. So the revised numbers are 155.3, just slightly over the the June numbers coming in. But you can see a pretty hefty drop of 21,600 jobs followed by a 5,800 job recovery. Add 800 to that near up to 6,600. So things are trending in the right direction, although a little bit of a pause in July over the big jump that we had in June. And again, these are jobs physically located in Clark County. This next slide shows you the total number of employed individuals living in Clark County. So it's a little bit in contrast to the original or to the prior slide and but has the same presentation. The blue bar and the left hand axis is the represents the number of employed individuals living here. And then the line in the right hand axis is the percentage change from period to period. And you can see 186,000, the the low point roughly one year after the low point for the jobs data for Clark County. The peak year 2019, very similar, 230,000 people employed, fairly significant drop in May, 21,820 drop, followed by another 5,000 and change increase in June. So fairly healthy recovery. Did just get the July numbers for this and that showed another 6,000 plus job improvement. We're up to 220,795 jobs. So that 220 really is back to 2018 levels and represents a stronger recovery in the Portland metropolitan area for people who are living in Clark County and employed over there. And just to frame a number that I think you've heard a number of times, 230,000 is the number of people employed that live here. This is the prior slide. 170,000 is the number of jobs located here. The difference roughly 60,000 represents people that essentially commute, the net difference of people who commute out of Clark County for their employment. So again, the the impacts of the pandemic, fairly severe impacts in May, followed by a fairly strong recovery in June, stronger recovery in the Portland market than in Clark County in July. A little bit closer look, we can see the information we get from our local sales tax. So this chart shows you the monthly sales tax collections for the last four years. The blue bars represent 2020. And July's information came in very strong. If you recall, this is a two-month delay. So this is actually sales from May activity, sales tax from May activity coming in in July. And that May was the month that the construction sort of restarted. But the 2020 trend has been very similar to prior years in terms of a little bit of a slowdown during the early spring, rebounding in July, obviously in 2020. And then this purple bar represents 2017, and this was during the construction to the, I think it was was the sewer line construction out to the junction. This bright bar represents the forecast that we've developed for 2020, and this was as of June 30th. I may have to revise this up a little bit based on the July results, but you can see last year, this number got this highlighted actually for you in the staff report, Maria does. But roughly 17,000 last year is almost two and a half times roughly that this year than compared to last year. Wanted to give you a little bit of a sense of the pipeline for lot development. So provided probably too much information here, but listed all the subdivisions that are in development or approved or pending in process. And the number of lots that are associated with those developments and then highlight the building permits that have been issued or approved anyways, or that are under review. The takeaway from this top area is that you've got about 226 vacant and buildable lots or expect to have that many vacant and buildable lots from the lots that are developed or being developed right now. In addition, you've got those that are sort of further out in the pipeline that constitute another 180 lots and 148 multifamily units. The Riverside Estates final site plan is under review. So it just adds another roughly 180 single-family homes and 148 multifamily homes, potential homes to the pipeline. And on these comment section, these came primarily from Jeff Swanson and Sarah Dollar provided commentary on effectively what they think is happening with each of these subdivisions. So fairly significant number of lots is 226 plus the 180 gets you to 400 on the single-family side plus another 148 on the multifamily. A little further out in the pipeline would be subdivisions that are potentially going to be developed associated with recent annexations. And these come from, again, the planning department, looking at a maximum number of lots of roughly 200 for the annexations that are in the pipeline. Then there's a development, the Summit Ridge Development came in for a pre-app earlier. 86 single-family lots and 348 multifamily units. But if you look at this, you know, you're upwards of, you know, 500 to 700 lots available, likely to be available over the next five to seven years, which is, you know, a fairly sizable capacity for new development. The context for that is the housing permits that you've issued. And this graph provides you an update on that with the June numbers for the actual number that have been issued per the Census Bureau. And this compares the blue bar and the left-hand axis are the cumulative number of housing permits that have been issued in 2020. And then the other lines provide that same data. In addition, in the little box here, I've got the data from the planning department through the middle of last week. And so the total number that they've received is 91. So it's significantly higher number than the 55 that have been issued according to the Census Bureau. And then I mentioned those 144 multifamily units that are currently under review as well, significantly exceeding the 2020 budget of 180 total. And then just looking at August alone, so for August month to date through last week, there were 15 permits that had been received. So this 55 definitely going to grow through to this 91. But the August data through mid-month suggests that things are going fairly strong, continue to go fairly strong in the new building permit area. To give you a little bit of a sense of how you compare to your local to the other local cities, wanted to take that same Census Bureau data and show you the information for the other cities in Clark County. And you can see where you compared 55 compared to Battleground, Camus, Ridgefield and Waschugel. And then Vancouver and unincorporated, just going great guns. So despite the pandemic, the local housing market continues to move forward with a substantial number of housing developments, both with houses being completed, but also with lots being developed. When you normalize this for population to get a sense of how fast the population is growing, let me get my notes here. You come in second, even though you're second to last on this chart, you actually come in just below Ridgefield. So the annual rate of growth, the percentage growth through mid-year for Ridgefield would be about 6.3%. So those 245 permits represent about a 6.3% growth. Yours represents about a 3.7% growth. So I'm tracked with the 55 anyways to come close to replicating the 8.8% growth that the Office of Financial Management showed you for 2020. Camus was a little bit lower at 1.4% and the others were all under 1% growth through six months of the year. Again, positive the development on the development side relative to the peer cities. And then lastly, inflation just really continues to be muted. The storyline here, inflation through the first half of 2020 at 1.9% on an annual basis. You can see how that compares to the prior years. And back in 2017, the Census Bureau stopped, I think it's the Census Bureau, I think it's a actually Commerce, stopped collecting data on the Portland CPI. So most of the cities in our region are using the CPI US West Region Index. So that's what this data represents, not a significant variation between this and the Portland CPI in prior years, but fairly fairly low inflation. Now, any specific category within the the Consumer Price Index might show more volatility. For example, housing costs probably up significantly more than this. But then again, things like gas costs probably up significantly less and there's fairly significant drop in in gas costs. So that's it on the economic update. Any questions before I leave this topic on any of the things that I've covered? Again, I think the the primary takeaway is the the pandemic has certainly had an impact. There's a recovery in process, still a ways to go to get back to the levels that we were at before the pandemic. But that strong housing market, strong growth in the center and strong sales tax realization here as well. So I've got a slide on the budget calendar. Just want to hit a couple of these highlights going forward from today. So we've got some activity in September. These are requirements embodied in the RCW. Department heads need to submit their budgets to the city clerk by the end of September. Backing up from that, I've actually sent the budgets out to the department heads this week, asking them to get that information back to me by the 8th of September. So we can compile that for the Budget Advisory Committee on the 16th. And then we'll present that information to you on the 23rd. Effectively, this will be the final baseline budget covering all of the departments and all of the funds, whereas the information I'm presenting to you today is really just a real rough draft of the the baseline budget. Following up on those estimates.
Paul.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me? So are we doing a zero-based budget again like last year?
I don't, I don't necessarily subscribe to the zero-based budgeting approach. Effectively, we have staffing costs, which represent roughly two-thirds of your costs are known. We have, you know, I use a baseline budget, which essentially assumes that you're going to continue with the exact same programs and the exact same revenue structure into 2021. So that's the starting point. And then we can add or subtract from that depending on both the policy direction of the council, but also as the economics and the fiscal situation requires. The reality is with two-thirds of your cost being personnel, those are sort of easy ones to identify and know how you would add and subtract and the impacts from those. And then a substantial portion of your other costs are somewhat required. There are things like liability insurance, your CRESSA, your emergency, your 911 costs. So there's the significant portion of those costs that are also known. But I'll present to you the costs in those areas that are sort of the the fixed and known. And then the adds and subtracts from the baseline.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
This information, as I mentioned, will will present a baseline budget to you in a workshop in September. The Budget Advisory Committee wanted to have an additional review looking at the budget before we submit the mayor's preliminary budget to city council in November. So this will be, their meeting will be on October 7th. And that'll give them a chance to have a little bit more input on any budget balancing options or policy recommendations that that group wants to make. I will add that in this September meeting, we will have a six-year financial forecast for you. Again, it'll be preliminary. It won't benefit from the third quarter financial results that we'll get at the end of September. This presentation will have an updated six-year financial forecast. That'll be, that'll benefit from the third quarter 2020 financial results as well. But the preliminary budget is presented, has to be presented to council before the 1st of November. We'll do that in a workshop on the 28th. The Budget Advisory Committee will have two meetings to review that information before it comes to city council. And then that becomes the basis for the public hearing on the budget, which has to be preceded by a public hearing on revenues and your property tax. That will happen on November 11th. We'll have a workshop, actually. Maria let me know or let us know that this is actually Veterans Day. So your regular council meeting is scheduled for Veterans Day, which is a holiday. So my guess is that'll be rescheduled and we'll rework these dates accordingly. Following the public hearing on the revenues and the property tax, you have to have a public hearing on the budget, the final budget. And you have to adopt your property tax no later than the end of November and adopt your budget no later than the end of December. So in a nutshell, that's the schedule for your 2021 budget process. Any questions or comments? So another series of workshops to bring to you again, the first one, the preliminary forecast and the baseline budget, updated final forecast, six-year forecast and the preliminary budget. And then the public hearing on revenues and the property tax levy. So with that, I will go into the general fund baseline. And again, this is a really a preliminary baseline developed primarily by me from looking at your historical trends, your 2020 budget, as well as your 2020 actuals through June. And as I mentioned before, that really the definition of a baseline budget is taking current policy, current programs as they both apply to both the revenue and the expense side. Excuse me, and bringing those forward into 2021 without any substantive changes. So we do add things like property, property tax, for example, we we know we're going to have new construction. We have to know what our levy is going to be next year. On the expense side, we know that we have a certain contractual adjustments to salaries and benefit cost increase that we have to incorporate. So it takes those known factors and adds them in and looks at the bottom line on, so it looks at revenues and expenses and then looks at the bottom line to give you a really a preview of the situation that you'll be in. So I want to walk through a couple of the revenue, key revenue assumptions. My initial assumption was new construction would be about 25 million. This is close to what it was last year. Actually, last week, we got the first volley of data from the assessor's office. And I'm happy to report that it's better than what I had originally assumed. So it looks like this may be in excess of 30 million. Your increase in your property tax associated with new construction will be in the 5% to 6% range in addition to the 1% you get from just the 1% increase over last year. We will have better information on new construction in about two weeks. And we'll be able to solidify what those numbers are. But I think this may be about a $20,000, $20,000 bump over what I show you in a few minutes. Gambling tax. So this is obviously the hardest one and the most important one to estimate. My guess at this point is that you'll have 75% of a normal year. Normal year being 1.3 million or coming in at about 975,000. So that is either three months of closure and nine months worth of regular results, or it's sort of a baby steps growth over a longer period of time. I did get a report that the activity during the brief period that they were open in July held up pretty well. So that helped inform sort of a return to normal if and when they're able to open. Obviously, the longer they stick closed, the more challenging this will be to achieve as their customers and clients find other venues. So just a real rough guess that that I'm using is the 975. So that's about a $325,000 difference over the 2018 and 2019 numbers.
Paul, real quick, while you were saying that, I I understand what you're saying there. I was just trying to figure out how you came up with those numbers. If we're only off 75 or off 25%, how did we go from a positive to an 891,000 negative? Or those numbers, I know those numbers are probably skewed a little bit. It's just off the top of my head. But I know they were, you know, similar, very close to.
Yeah. So this is for 2021, not 2020.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah. So the 2020 numbers, the last number we showed you, I think, was 600,000. So it's a significant drop from the 1.3 million. And it will likely be lower the next time we give you an update because of the resumed closures. So yeah, so this is my guess for 2021 and I am open to other, you know, other ideas, but this is my starting point.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Sorry about that.
Well, that's good. So on the development side, being a little bit more conservative here, these numbers represent 132 total units, 60 new single-family homes. So you can remember back, we've already received 91 applications this year. The 72 represent half of that 144-unit multifamily complex that's working its way through the permit process. So if the revenue assumptions on both the permit fees as well as the sales tax take into account this level of new development, I'm not including any new commercial development. So nothing from the minute management junction development happening. There is likely some potential sales tax from the new development at the Chevron Station across the way there. But haven't really incorporated any additional commercial development. Those subdivisions that I mentioned earlier that I hit on earlier in the pipeline, we're assuming that those will move forward. So there'll be some both permit fee activity as well as some sales tax activity associated with the subdivision developments. So continuing the sales tax, as I mentioned, the development, in addition, we've got the new middle school that will continue to be built over 2021. And I took a little bit of a discount off of the other, the non-construction retail sales, taking about 80% of that number. State shared revenue, a couple of key assumptions here. I'm assuming that you won't be eligible for city assistance in 2021. However, since that Budget Advisory Committee last week have done a little bit more digging and will know in September. So I'll defer until we get the official word from the State Department of Revenue, but I think there may be a small chance that you might just eke under the program guidelines and be eligible again. My assumption is that you won't, and that represents about a $40,000 loss in revenue versus 2020. The per capita revenue, we're using the MRSC, the Municipal Research and Services Center estimates. They publish those every year. Sure. The good news is, is that you had a population increase. The bad news is those per capita distributions associated with the the gas tax, the liquor excise tax, those types of things have gone down a little bit. So they're over prior years. So the yield on that isn't what it might be with your population increase had those per capita numbers not gone down. So but still a fairly healthy increase overall, except for the the city assistance. And on the sewer debt payment, I'm using a 400,000 estimate. This is up from 300,000 in 2020. The 400,000 is the number that was included in the 2018 forecast that we developed in the process of updating that forecast, working with the Public Works Director on that. The sort of good news is, I think that the ERUs, the equivalent residential units, the billing units for the sewer are doing better than they were. ERUs, the equivalent residential units, the billing units for the sewer are doing better than they were in the twenty eighteen forecast, so we've beat those results, and the other good news is that the estimated cost of the membrane replacement is about five hundred thousand lower than was what was in the forecast, so. A couple of positive developments there, but we'll be sharing the updated forecast with you at the next workshop.
Paul, this is Randy, have we seen any increase in sales tax due to online buying?
You know, we don't have the data to be able to attribute the increases. I knew, I do know from looking at data at a broader level that the retail sales have held up surprisingly well. And in your instance, I think the substantial portion of it is coming from new construction, so. I think it's a combination of retail sales holding up well. We've talked before about the fact that online sales now get sales tax coded to the place of delivery. So to the extent that people are having things ordered in as opposed to going to Hazel Dell or Salmon Creek to buy them, you're benefiting from that difference. So I think it's a combination of those three factors, more place-based retail sales, in the center, fairly healthy retail sales overall, and then robust construction happening in the center as well.
I guess the construction definitely over exceeds the retail sales, so, anyway, thank you, Paul.
It's a big number. So here's a historical trend, this is the revenues by major revenue source going back to two thousand fifteen. Really want to focus on the twenty twenty one estimate, and this percent change is over the twenty twenty estimate. And then this percent change overall is over the twenty twenty budget, so. Just to highlight a couple of things on this, as I mentioned, the property tax number, I think this may actually go up by oh, twenty thousand or so when we get the final numbers from the assessor. Utility excise taxes factoring in the new home construction in there, but taking off from the twenty twenty estimate significantly lower than the twenty twenty budget estimate that was used. Sales tax dropping a little bit, again, a result of the somewhat lower new development estimates used in twenty twenty one versus twenty twenty, there may be some upside for this. This may be adjusted upwards as well, based on the, again, the July data that we got. And then the card room tax, so there is the six hundred and fifty thousand council member strove that we were talking about before for twenty twenty and the nine seventy five for twenty twenty one. And again, I think these are the, the most difficult to estimate. And ones that will have the most impact on whether you have a surplus or deficit, so. Licenses and permits and charges for goods and services are primarily driven by the development activity. The intergovernmental, you can see this is down compared to the prior years, and this is a result, is a result of that city assistance payment not being included. And then finally, the four hundred and twenty two thousand miscellaneous, this includes the four hundred thousand transfer from the sewer fund for the repayment of the debt. So overall, we're looking at a fairly substantial bump over the twenty twenty estimate. But a lot of that is assuming the nine seventy five versus the six fifty on the card rooms. And then the four hundred thousand versus three hundred thousand on the sewer fund debt repayment. Compared to the twenty twenty budget though, we're down ten percent, the three point six million comparing to the almost four million, the twenty twenty budget. Okay, so that's the revenues, any questions before I move on to the expenses? So a couple of things to highlight on the expenses, first, as I mentioned, the staffing and personnel, sixty percent, sixty seven percent, so two thirds of your total expenses. So a large amount of that is relatively known. The current staffing levels and contract or inflation cost of living adjustments, the cost of living at two and a half percent was part of the contracts that you have in place, and we're assuming for the ones that you don't. The police staffing, two sergeants and five patrol officers, so the assumption is that those continue into twenty twenty one. We've got, again, your in-contract negotiation still hasn't been finalized, so once that's finalized, it will have an impact on the twenty twenty one budget. You also have merit and step progression increases, so there's the, the recent hires get a three percent increase on the annual basis in addition to the cost of living adjustment. There are also merit-based increases as well. Potentially some good news on the retirement, this is the public employees retirement system and the law enforcement officers and firefighters systems. We have estimates, we have known numbers. The state actuary has actually come out with a recommendation to the legislature that the purse employer contribution would go down. And that would potentially go down the second half of the year, it would be effective in July one, the state's fiscal year. And then this also reflects the personnel restructuring that's been implemented over the last two to three years, there's been changes in the police department retirements, planning has had some restructuring as well as obviously the changes in other areas. Other expenses, so effectively what we do is we take a look at the historical trends, we look at the most recent information we have on two thousand nineteen actuals and two thousand twenty year to date. And come up with estimates on what we think the number should be for each specific line item in the budget. And then we roll those up to include in the baseline. So when you look at personnel costs, I wanted to give a little bit more visibility to the personnel costs in each department, so here's the full-time equivalent employees, total of thirty one point two five, which is effectively the same as last year. Excuse me. Just under three point four million total, you can see how the staffing is allocated across departments. And then what the derivative costs are, personnel costs are in each of those departments. These allocations are a key assumption for the general fund. And I know we've talked about this before, but with the addition of the storm fund, we have a little bit more of an allocation from finance to process both the, the billings, but also the expense activity in the storm fund. In addition to the allocation of the public work staff, and this represents an updated number from the public works director as well. And then in planning, we have some assumptions about the amount of time spent on capital fund projects. And then this is the city engineer primarily, so this point two five and point one is an estimate of the time from the city engineer, which we're in the process of getting an update on. So these assumptions about where these costs are allocated are important assumptions for the general fund baseline budget. Just wanted to give a little bit more visibility to those costs. But you include those assumptions on the personnel side and the non-personnel side, and again, focusing on the twenty twenty one estimate. But with a little bit lower estimate for finance, and this is again a function of the allocations that I just mentioned. But also the reduction in professional services that's anticipated for twenty twenty one versus twenty twenty. You can see how this compares fairly close to the twenty twenty budget number that was adopted this year. Other numbers represent fairly close numbers for prior years. Slight increases over the twenty twenty estimates, so let's see if there's anything else that I wanted to highlight. The big unknown is on the planning side, so the community development side. You can see forecasting an eight percent increase over the most recent estimate for twenty twenty and significant increase over the twenty twenty budget. This assumes the activity that's in the pipeline continues to move forward, so those annexations turn into potential applications that need to be reviewed for development, subdivision development. And those subdivisions move forward in their process as well, in their land use review and their permit review. And it also reflects the baseline staffing costs that we've talked about before. And then no change really on the public works park side from the prior year, and this five seventy three represents really the the baseline using those allocations from last year, and that this number is probably a little bit high for this year, but there's also been a, forgot to mention a public work supervisor position that was eliminated last year as well, so that reflects those cost changes. So like I said, these costs will be updated based on information provided by the departments, hopefully by September eighth. But if you total up the expense side, you get three, three point nine million, almost four million dollars. Roughly this, almost exactly the same as the twenty twenty budget number. And roughly one point four percent below our most recent two thousand twenty estimate. And there's the June thirtieth forecast deficit for the general fund in twenty twenty, and this three seventy two is the rough draft preliminary general fund baseline estimate for twenty twenty one. And just to put some context to that, so three hundred and twenty five thousand of that is the shortfall in the card rooms, maybe a twenty thousand pickup on the property tax. Depending on where new construction comes in, and then if that city assistance comes in, another forty thousand. Again, if, if all of those were to, to come through, it'd be close to, to having a break even balanced baseline budget, and this is again before any projects or other unknowns that we might be made aware of by the department heads. So I'm going to pause there again, one other thing, I'm sorry. One, one other thing I wanted to mention. In police and finance, there are a number of costs that have been historically in police, but also in finance, that really neither one manage. Examples are in the police department, we've got the municipal court costs, we've got public defender costs, we've got jail costs that are associated with interlocal agreements. In finance, we have elections costs. So the proposal I'm putting forward is that we create a new department to isolate those costs. And a lot of jurisdictions have this, they call it general government. Effectively contracts that you have, that you have to essentially fund, but not necessarily associated with police or finance directly, so. So I'll pause there and see if there are any questions on the baseline budget, both revenues and expenses. Just a couple of things to hit on before we move on to budget balancing options. Primarily focusing on next steps, so the departments will review, will make some adjustments. To the extent that those vacant positions in finance and police are there at the end of the year, we may have some vacancies that we can forecast into twenty twenty one. So they might not be filled on January one, we'll take that into account. Obviously, the police contract resolution, we need to incorporate that. I just mentioned the prosecutor, indigent defense and court costs, going to try and move those into a separate category. Sewer fund forecast, planning professional services, and then your reserve policy, your last month's workshop, we, we touched on that. So to the extent that there's a deficit, we want to present different options that you have for balancing the budget, and I don't want to go through this whole list, I provide this to you primarily for preliminary consideration, there'll be more information provided on this as we access some of these tools to balance the budget. But this first page is council authorized revenue sources, so these are actions that the council can take without voter approval. First is just a transfer back from the capital fund, when this allocation to the capital fund was originally established, it assumed that the city would need to be contributing funds for, actually, the the junction interchange, the sewer line to the junction, and a much larger number for a potential city hall, so those essentially value and other grants that you've had for other capital projects have helped reduce the city's out-of-pocket contribution, so there may be some funding that's available from the general capital fund. Obviously, expense reductions, ten percent reduction in expenses would be yield another three hundred and ninety five thousand, obviously, that would likely need to be staffing based. And then changing your reserve policy using reserves. The three hundred and ninety five thousand is a ten percent, represents ten percent of expenses. And that would effectively balance your three hundred and seventy two thousand dollar preliminary deficit. Other items that could be taken, yield a much smaller dollar amount, just to highlight a couple of these, the garbage utility tax was one that was actually discussed when you implemented your other utility tax, I believe it was left off inadvertently. Almost every city in Clark County and a large majority of the cities across the state have a garbage utility tax, the average rate or the minimum rate in Clark County, I think, is ten percent right now, Canis does not have garbage utility tax, but the other cities charge roughly a ten percent tax or franchise fee. And then one other one that I would highlight is a transportation benefit district, this is another revenue generating tool for transportation that many of the other jurisdictions in Clark County have implemented and take advantage of, so those are two that I'd highlight. On the voter authorized list, the one I want to highlight really is the property tax levy lid lift, and this is one that we've talked about before, it's probably the one that gives you the most flexibility. And the, the most straightforward, and actually with the updated information from the assessor's office, I can update these numbers that two sixty eight's actually just over three hundred thousand now, it'd be three hundred and five thousand. Unfortunately, you can't implement it now for twenty twenty one because we're past the deadline for putting anything on the ballot. But to the extent that you put this on the ballot in twenty twenty one, the revenue would be available in twenty twenty two, and it actually would be higher than that three hundred and five thousand because you'd have another year of potential appreciation and new construction, so that's a fifty percent voter approval requirement for a property tax lid lift, and you've probably seen these, lots of fire districts do this. The city of Washougal does this quite frequently to help support specific expenditures. The rest of these I can get into if there are any questions, but they're lower yielding and somewhat more, some of them are very specific, like affordable housing. And then lastly, just to hit on junction development, so as I mentioned, the twenty twenty one baseline assumes no commercial development, so the minute management project would not be developed or generating revenue in twenty twenty one. The estimate from that development plus a hundred unit apartment building, so including a hundred-room hotel, a hundred-year department building in the retail space as currently depicted up at the junction. Construction sales tax from those developments will be two hundred and twenty thousand, and ostensibly, this would come in over more than just one year, and then the ongoing sales and property tax revenue would total just under a hundred thousand, that's the estimate from those three types of development, so fairly substantial revenue coming from potential new development at the junction. You do have potential for additional expenses for street, park, trail maintenance, police response, et cetera. The assumption is for this level of development, those expenses would be minimal, but there's something that you would have to consider. So those are the tools that would be available on the budget balancing side. And then just quickly to close on next steps, as I mentioned, the property tax information, we should have information available next week. Or the week after on new construction. or the week after on new construction. Card room status, I think that's sort of a week to week, month to month. As we talked about, they were able to open for partial period in July. They're hopeful to be able to reopen as well. Not sure what the status is on that, but we'll know more as we go through the rest of the year. We've got to develop the budgets for the other utilities as well as the equipment replacement. And we've got to give some thought to the capital budget as well. And that would set us up for a council workshop in September for the final baseline budget that would cover all of these areas. We'd include a six-year financial forecast and highlight any of the budget balancing recommendations that we want to seriously consider for two thousand and twenty-one. And then lastly, when we get past the end of September, we'll have the third quarter financial update. And we'll use that to update the six-year forecast. And we'll also use that to inform the preliminary budget that gets presented in October. One thing I don't have listed here is the sewer fund forecast, so that'll be also be part of your workshop in September. So that's it for me. Happy to answer any questions or engage in any discussion.
Hi, Paul. Doug here. Question for you. Have we considered worst case scenario? In other words, the card rooms don't reopen?
I think it's easy to do the math when you look at the revenues and the expenses, so you can see the impacts of that. I go back to your reserve policies in that event. You know, in in the discussions that we had back in the days that we put those together, the conversation was just that point, you know. It would allow you to do a transition, a thoughtful transition. I think it's premature to try and have that conversation right now. But to the extent that you are notified that they are definitely going to close, you know, that the reserves give you, you know, six months to a year. You know, one point three million dollars is the revenue that we're including for them. Your reserves are in the four million dollar range. So you've got actually multiple years of replacement revenue to the extent that you need that much time to to think through how you'd respond. But it would undoubtedly be a combination of, you know, the the revenue and the expense side.
Of course. Probably wouldn't hurt for us to be discussing those city council and voter approved line items which you discussed earlier in your presentation.
Those, the budget advisory committee has been looking at those and will continue to look at those.
Great presentation, Paul. I appreciate all your hard work and efforts in putting this together. Again, I realize it's all still very preliminary. We're early in the process and a lot of developments can take place between now and when we finally get this done this year. But also doesn't have any other questions.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can go ahead and close out this session and then take a five. Almost twenty-five after six, so about another five minutes we can, after a few, take a few minute break, and then we'll come back for the city council meeting.
Do we need to log out or can we leave our leave our connection?
I'm going to ask the clerk now right now. I'm not able to control my icon here. Clerk for reading and camera.
So I was going to just leave it logged in since we only have about a five-minute break, but I can take it off the record and then put it back on once we start the meeting.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Let's just leave everything as is. I think you could just take and dark, turn off all our cameras and mute everybody, and we'll come back at at six thirty.
This conference will now be recorded.
The recording has started, so if we could. Clerk, are you ready to go?
Yes, let me just share my screen.
Okay. Okay.
It's a nice photo.
So today is Wednesday, August twenty-six, two thousand and twenty. I'd like to call this virtual city council meeting to order. We could all please stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance and to the republic one nation
I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Councilmember Boss?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin? Councilmember Servini?
Present.
And Mayor Thornton?
Here. Thank you. Through the consent agenda, if there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say yes.
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 Hold. Stand. Action carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. For, I'm going to ask the clerk to read any citizens' public comment this evening that does not pertain to an item that's on the agenda for resolution twenty dash two, excuse me, twenty dash four, five, four. The city number of public comments on that particular resolution. So what clerk has done is made a copy of all of those public comments and emailed them to each one of the council members. And she's also converted that to a PDF file. That PDF file has been attached to the meeting minutes, and it will be part of the record going forward. So those comments will be part of the record. The council members have them. I trust that they have reviewed them and read them and that they will also be part of the record. And people will be able to go through those and scroll through them to read all the all the public comments that we have received. So with that being said, could the clerk please read any public comment that does not pertain to the resolution twenty dash four, five, four?
We have one public comment. It's from James Irish, sixteen fifty-three, East Heritage Loop. Good evening, mayor and city council. My concern is with the recent re-closing of our local card rooms slash restaurants and the financial strain that has been placed on both the card rooms and the city of La Center. When the phase two changes and the restrictions were made, our card rooms went through a lot of expense to meet the requirements such as the improved social distancing at both game tables and restaurant seating, ensure the wearing of masks, and the temperature monitoring of incoming patrons and workers, to name a few. They were allowed to open for business for approximately three and a half weeks and were greeted very well by both the players and diners. The revenue was picking up, slowing in volume, not hand over fist, but showing forward progress. Then came the announcement from the governor shutting them down again. He stated that the rise in the cases of COVID nineteen for the state was the cause for taking this action, even though Clark County and especially the city of La Center with no reported cases at all hadn't shown any change. The phase two guidelines we are presented now with the additional constraints have made it impossible to achieve fifty percent capacity. And even at fifty percent, it is impossible to be profitable. It appears some of the restrictions are implemented to try and control those who do not want to comply, which in effect hurts those that do. There is talk around town that supposedly was started from a member of the city council that the mayor had written and sent a letter from the city to Governor Jay Inslee's office. It stated the financial impact to the city by this action of closure and requested that since our card rooms slash restaurants had made the above changes and were diligently working to continue to provide a safe and social environment, the governor's office and the state and local leaders should promote the positive safe environment that they have created for their workers and the patrons that come to our area to enjoy them. If this rumor is not true, then I strongly suggest that members of of the city council and the mayor push forward with this as an urgent action item. Thank you for your attention to this public comment. And that's all.
Thank you. On the agenda is the mayor's report. I just have a few things I'll share with council this evening. First of all, I in reference to the public comment, I did send out a letter to Governor Inslee's office earlier this week to Sherri Sawyer. It is a follow-up letter to a letter that was sent out on July twenty-seventh. And those letters are basically a letter to inform the governor's office of of the impact of the C of a center because of the closure of the card rooms and have requested some consideration for reopening our card rooms here locally. I have mailed that or emailed that to the council members. I believe each one of them have that and had a chance to review it. And I've also included it here in the meeting agenda this evening, so it's part of the record. So again, council, I do want to let you know that that's gone out. And the city has not received any response to that letter to date. The other thing I just want to mention to the council this evening, I did read in the in the Colombian yesterday, I believe it was, that Chairman IL has stepped down as the chairman of the Collets Indian Tribe and that Vice Chair Phil Haru has now become the chairman. So I just want to bring that to the council's attention. Of course, we wish Chairman IL all the very best as he moves on into retirement and look forward to a meeting with Chairman Haru and continuing where all the issues and agenda items that we need to continue to work on with the tribe. Only other issue or item that I wanted to bring up this evening is that Monday, September seventh is Labor Day, and that all the city offices will be closed. That's all I have this evening. Next is the attorney's report. The attorney.
Good evening. Very briefly, I checked this afternoon on the governor's proclamation website to see if there have been any extensions of the proclamation prohibiting in-person public meetings. There has not been an update since the action that the governor took in July. That extended the prohibition till midnight September one. The same is true for some modifications to the Public Records Act. So, you know, I fully expect that the governor will make an extension of the proclamation, but hasn't done so yet. So we'll just keep an eye for what what action he takes next and what the extension will be to.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any questions for the city attorney this evening from the city council? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next is council comments. Councilmember Ball.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Stimmel?
No comments tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Strobin?
I just want to remind that I am driving and traveling, and if my call does drop, I will dial back in, but nothing else tonight. Thank you.
Okay, be careful. And council
Nothing to add, mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. On this evening's agenda, we do have two staff reports. The first one will be a community development staff report, and Mr. Jeff Swanson will be presenting. Jeff.
Thank you, mayor, council. Good evening, everybody. I just have a project to bring to your attention. The first is project number six, and I'll let our our clerk kind of scroll and follow along with me here. Project number six is the Heritage Center Building B. It's a office retail building. And the update there is that the proposed tenant improvements have been paused because of COVID nineteen. They've slowed things down on the tenancy for that particular occupant. Number seven, the La Center Middle School, the footings and foundation work have started. And a new portable for the middle school has arrived. It arrived on the seventeenth for placement. Next one is minute management. That's up at the junction, like number eight. And the, for this one, the final site plans and civil plans were dropped off for the city to perform their review on the tenth of August. Next project update is number nine, which is the Schwartz Bed and Breakfast. And on this one, they they were applying for a variance, but that application, that application was deemed complete on August third. But it was placed on hold on August seventeenth because there are a few outstanding issues needing to be addressed. Number fourteen, Highland Terrace, the subdivision in the northwest part of the city. And they've submitted an application for grading and erosion control permits on August nineteenth. On the Holly subdivision, that's number fifteen. Nine family residential plans have been approved to date. On its place, that's number sixteen. Single-family residential permits have been approved to date, and one is in plan review currently. On Riverside Estates, number seventeen. Today, forty-six building plans have been approved. Eleven homes have been given occupancy, and nine applications are currently in plan check. Next update is on project twenty-two, which is the Bellica Town Homes project. Staff report was sent to the applicant on the fourteenth of this month. On number twenty-three, Stone Creek East Mason Short Platte. There was to be a pre-app conference held, but no pre-app was held on the scheduled date. Revised plat was brought in by the applicant on August seventeen. And finally, number twenty-four, which is a new project to the list, is the new city hall building slash the old TDS building and the tenant improvements. The architect has submitted drawings to the city for review. And so we're working with the architect to complete the building application submittals for formal review and are actually working on scheduling a pre-application conference with the architect, fire marshal, building official to review the plans and provide comments, formal comments to the architect so that that project can continue to move forward. That's all I have. Project updates. Are there any questions for me? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, there are no questions. We will move on. Counselor, are you good with? Very good. Well, thank you, Jeff. In the finance staff report, and I guess we'll be presenting that to the council this evening. Paul?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm standing in for Maria swinger Inskip, your manager of administrative services. So I'll try and So I'll try and represent her comments here, just to walk through these topics that she's presented. First up is the COVID-19 grant. I think as you're aware, each of the cities received a cost reimbursement grant from the CARES Act through the state of Washington. The city of La Center shares just over $100,000. Roughly $25,000 of that has been spent. It's in the process of being billed against that grant. Has to be sent up to the Department of Commerce. The city is in the process of identifying other potential uses for those funds. If you may be aware, several other cities have used these funds to provide relief to both residents and businesses. The city of La Center and Maria is currently exploring that option, developing applications for both residents and businesses to apply for funds. The expectation is that that will move forward and you'll be receiving most likely via email information on that program and that process with the target of having those applications, at least notice of those applications, go out with the September utility bills and having those applications available on the city's website by roughly mid-September. So moving forward on programs similar to what other cities are doing with their CARES Act funds. Quickly on finance department staff, I think as you're aware, one of the two accountants left the city last month. That position is being held vacant while the new administrative services manager gets oriented to the tasks that are involved and can have a more direct hand in the hiring process for that position. Sales tax dispersment, as I mentioned in the workshop earlier today, the July distribution came in very strong at 48,000, 42,858, up substantially from last year for the same month at 17,788. And again, this reflects May activity where we received the revenues in July. And that was the month that the construction activity was freed up from the restrictions that were placed on it initially during the pandemic response. Also related to the pandemic, late fees on your sewer fund, your sewer utility bills, been a small increase in the number of late fees or excuse me, late utility bills per the proclamation from the governor extending the state of emergency. Your relief on those late fees has also been extended through October. So despite the, the people that have late fees or excuse me, past due bills, there will not be assessed any late fees. Also related to COVID-19, the city has implemented some health checks internally. Effective September 1st, September 1st, all city employees will need to respond to those health checks and that data will be compiled and logged. As we discussed earlier, the card rooms had to close in July before the end of the month. And as the mayor mentioned, a letter had been sent to the governor's office requesting some consideration for revisiting that decision and, and working out some specific requirements. To reopen. The deferred taxes in the agreement that you approved earlier this month, the, the first third of payment of those deferred taxes is due the end of August. So the payments will be due the end of August, the end of September and the end of October. We've sent information to the card rooms notifying them of the payment due dates as well. Budget Advisory Committee met on August 19th. It will also meet again in September mid-month. And one final note on meeting agendas, cost savings measure. The meeting date and time will be the only thing that's published in the paper. There will not be an extended agenda. The agenda will be available on the city's website and also be posted at City Hall and in front of the library. So although it's not a significant amount of money, it is one of those cost-saving items that made sense and will be implemented. Happy to answer any questions to the extent that I am able.
Okay, hearing no questions. I just want to thank you for filling in for Maria this evening, Paul. Thank you for presenting this finance report and we'll look forward to getting back next week. So next on the agenda, we have a resolution, Resolution 20-254, a resolution admitting the display of expression of speech on city infrastructure. So the city attorney has prepared a staff report for this evening, but as a way of introduction, I would just like to review a few things with the council. History here and some comments. If a city expresses speech in an area, it may not regulate that speech based on the content or viewpoint, no matter how offensive that speech may be. The city only expresses speech by allowing yellow ribbons to be displayed on the Center Bridge since 2005. So the yellow ribbons have been displayed on the bridge for, for a long time, 15 years. It was originally my understanding, that's long before I got involved with the city, but it's my understanding that a high school student actually went before the city council at that time, wanted to see some recognition for troops that were serving in Iraq and thought that would be a good idea to put yellow ribbons on the bridge to show support. The city council at that time did pass a resolution to allow for that to take place and the ribbons have been on the bridge more or less consistently since 2005. So that's the history on the yellow ribbons. And then recently, blue ribbons were placed on La Center Bridge by a group of residents. The, the blue ribbons were placed on the bridge really without the, the knowledge of the city. The residents went out, I think in good faith, they, they had a belief in the cause that they were placing those ribbons on for. And they placed the ribbons on the bridge. And after the blue ribbons were placed on the bridge, I was contacted by people that had some concerns about both those particular ribbons. So this evening's mission is not really to talk about the color of the ribbons that are on the bridge or the causes that those ribbons represent. It's really to talk about the expression of speech and the regulation of that speech. And that this practice without regulation could create a designated public forum for the expression of speech that if allowed to continue, the city would require to allow that expression of speech to end no matter how offensive that viewpoint may be to the community. Our discussion this evening is not to talk again about the color of the ribbons or the causes they represent, but to have a discussion about the public forum for the expression of speech. So for this evening, again, the matter for discussion is a resolution concerning public forum and the action requested is a consider, consideration of the resolution. As I talked about earlier in the meeting, we did receive a great deal of comments, number of comments that were addressing residents' concerns about the removal of ribbons from the bridge. And, and people, for the most part, do not like to, do not want to see the city have a resolution that would require that to happen. But again, the city is concerned that if somehow the council does not address this and provide some type of guidance, regulation, what have you, then going forward would not have an opportunity to regulate display of, of any type of expression of speech that could be placed on our city infrastructure. So it's a concern that the city has and I do think it warrants a conversation this evening by the city council. I think at that, I'll ask the city attorney to please go through his staff report. I just want to mention that it's not attorney's role to, you know, write policy or make policy suggestions to the city. His role is only to give us a legal opinion. And he will share that with us this evening. And then, of course, I'll turn it over to the council for discussion and how we want to move forward with this. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. You're right, the, the determination as to whether to open an area for the public expression of speech is a matter of policy that's simply strictly addressed to the council. It's a decision that's, there isn't really any criteria that it's weighed against. It's not appealable. It's, it's simply a matter of policy. And what I tried to do in my staff report was to provide, in just a couple pages, overview of a very complex body of law on the public expression of speech in public forums. My, my staff report isn't advocating for the resolution. It's not advocating against the resolution. It is strictly addressing the law as it relates to public forums and the expression of speech. So there, there are different types of public forums. And really, a public forum is just an area that has been recognized as a place where public speech can occur. And, and there's different categories of public forums. The traditional public forum has been recognized going back to a Supreme Court case from, I think, 1939, but as being pretty much limited to parks, streets, sidewalks, places where public speech has occurred historically. And, and that's called the traditional public forums. And, and that's where public speech is the most protected. So the, the public speaking that can occur there cannot be regulated based on content of viewpoint. Any regulation is subject to strict scrutiny, which is one of the highest standards that exists in the law. So a jurisdiction that imposes regulations on speech in traditional public forums has a very heavy burden of needing a strict scrutiny to show that any regulation is necessary and narrowly tailored to further a compelling state interest. And so there, there is a regulation even in traditional public forums, but it's pretty much limited to time, place and manner regulation. So it's permissible to say that the, the public speaking will end at, you know, 10:00 PM or midnight to preserve the public peace. It's permissible to regulate sound levels, decibels, how loud sound can be amplified, that type of thing. But you cannot regulate and try and differentiate or discriminate on the speech based on what is being said. The only exceptions that have been recognized to that are truth, truth threats of harm. So that can be regulated, but it has to be, you know, a true threat of harm, not something that somebody is implying or thinking is a hidden message. And obscenity has been allowed to be regulated. Commercial speech is an entirely different area of law. We're not really talking about commercial speech tonight. So the La Center Bridge and, and the placement of ribbons, railings on the bridge is not public speech that's occurring in or on a traditional public forum. It's true that the bridge is a street, but the, the railings are infrastructure that happened to be located within the street. And there's been a Supreme Court case in the state of Washington and in the United States Supreme Court that dealt with posting of messages on utility poles. And even though those poles were located within the right of way within the street, the court said that the infrastructure itself is not a traditional public forum. So that gets us to our next category of public forum, which is the designated public forum. And that's probably what the La Center Bridge is. It's an area where the city has designated or permitted the expression of public speech to occur. And once you have done that, the same rules apply as to the regulation of that speech. And, and that is that you cannot differentiate, discriminate or regulate that speech based on the content or the viewpoint of the speech. There, there, you could do time, place and manner regulation, but not regulation based on content or viewpoint. And then a subset of the designated public forum is the limited public forum. And that's where the area has been allowed for public speech, but in a limited manner, either limited by subject matter or speaker. And some examples of that would be, there's a case where a school district allowed a school facility to be used after hours by students for speaking, but it was limited to the students. And there, the court recognized that it was permissible to limit the speakers to the students because that limitation was not based on content or viewpoint. So the students could gather, speak, they could say, you know, what they wanted and there was no attempt to regulate what they were saying based on what the content or the viewpoint of the speech was. So what I tried to do, my staff report was pretty succinctly convey the information that, given that the bridge has been designated as an area for the public expression of speech, you need to realize that if somebody comes along and posts expression of speech on that railing, that you may find offensive or the community may find offensive. There is nothing that you can do to remove it or limit it based on the content or the viewpoint. And if with that knowledge, your position is that you wish to maintain the public forum, you can certainly do so. The the only other thing that I think I would say at this point is the, the matter, again, it's, it's simply policy for the council to decide. Just want you to do it on an informed basis. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Paulson. I, I do want to, several of the emails that I read or public comments I read, one of the concerns were the American flags that are placed on the bridge. Currently, the American Legion on holidays, special days do fly American flags on the bridge. Is this, would this resolution in any way impact that?
Mayor, I would, I would have to give that some more thought. Simply the city could itself maintain flags and banners on its infrastructure, but allowing a private entity to do so, I think I would, rather than give you an impromptu opinion off the top of my head, I would, I'd rather spend a little bit of time and then give a more informed opinion on that.
You would be comfortable saying that the city could place the flags on the bridge at their discretion?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Okay, with that, I'd like to open up for any questions or comments or discussion that you'd like to have regarding this resolution. Again, we're really not talking about the ribbons that are currently displayed on the bridge, nor the causes that they represent. I really want to make clear this resolution is really to address the public forum and the city is going to be able to manage that going forward. And of course, the city does that in so many other regards. I mean, that is the function of the city is to make sure that we manage that. So with that, I'll turn it over to the council.
This is Doug. I have a question for.
This is Doug. I have a question for Mr. Potter. Bronson, your narrative is very extensive. You cited four or five cases that address the topic of changing the designation of a forum area. If we were to, I'm just speculating now, if we were to not make any changes today and offensive signs began to show up, would it make things more complicated to change the designation after signs appeared on the bridge or on the railings?
So what I addressed in my staff report was the ability to actually close the designated public forum. The public forum is what it is, and you don't really change it from a traditional to a designated to a limited. But you can open or close a designated forum. And so to answer your question, if somebody came along and put up a sign that some people felt was offensive, and the council then wanted to close that public forum in a manner such as this resolution would, the fact that that form of expression had occurred would not impact or limit your ability to close the public forum. And that was one of the cases cited was the the case about the Confederate sons versus the city of Lexington, the Sons of the Confederate Veterans. And that's where the city was faced with the prospect of a group that was going to post signs that the city found offensive. And even with the prospect of that occurring, and even with that being the motivation for the city closing the forum, the closure was upheld by the court because it was content and viewpoint neutral. It limited or prohibited the public expression of speech within that forum across the board. And even though the person challenging the ordinance made the argument, well, you were motivated because you didn't like what I was saying or what I was going to say. The court said, that doesn't matter. As long as the action taken by the city was viewpoint and content neutral, and this was because it prohibited all speech, it is legal.
Do you think that would be inviting challenges anyway?
Well, you know, you can never say never. I don't know that inviting challenges. I've been in the legal business for nearly four decades, and you always get the threats of legal challenge. You know, I don't know that you can let that drive your public policy determination.
Okay, thank you.
So does that mean that we wouldn't be able to put flags on the bridge or decorate for Fourth of July or Christmas or anything like that because people would find that offensive? So that would stop as well?
So I was just earlier saying that that would not prohibit the city from decorating the bridge or putting flags or banners up on the bridge. Whether or not that would permit private groups to do that, there is a question there, and that I would need to know more information about what was being proposed to provide really an informed legal decision.
This is Doug again, question regarding Christmas decorations or holiday decorations. Assuming those decorations are secular in nature, is there an issue with the city continuing our tradition of putting up Christmas decorations?
Yeah.
They are secular. They are not religious.
Okay, so given that they are secular, that we're not worried, we're not pulling in the establishment of religion issues. And my answer to your question would be yes, the city could continue that practice.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question maybe for Liz. You maybe know the history of this. Was there ever a time when the city put those ribbons up? Or has it always been some external group?
I can't speak for Amber, clearly. But I know that at one point, there was actually a tree that was used, and the yellow ribbons were tied around it. But that tree became diseased and was removed. And then eventually, the resolution was passed by the council back, I believe, 2004, 2005. And the ribbons were then placed on the new bridge.
I would add to what Mr. Potter is already going to look into with respect to the flags. I'm curious if the city could could do, could put up ribbons if the city decided to do that. So I'm curious, when he's done with his research, maybe we could have some information on that, not just flags, but, well, Christmas decorations, flags. I'm kind of curious what the answer might be after his research. If he could include that, that would be great.
Sure, I could do that.
Given that Bronson needs to do some research, should we continue this discussion at the next council meeting?
We'd have more visitors.
I'm fine with continued on to the next council meeting. I think that's a wise decision there.
I'm a little concerned about enough time for the city attorney to do his research and get back. Bronson?
Yeah, I think in the next couple of weeks, I can do that.
Okay.
Wouldn't object to more time, but, you know, I can do that.
Bronson, I have one question. Without the council taking action on any type of resolution, are we tying the police department's hands on enforcing, you know, any type of signage or whatever may appear on the bridge? You know, without without it being city approval or public, even the community approval, none of us, you know, we see what's going on around us. I think if we continue to, my fear is if we if we turn a blind eye at the council level, we're not really taking any protective measures for the community at large, well knowing that, you know, as a community, we're all very supportive of our veterans and those that serve in any capacity. I mean, I have five generations in my family that served in the military as well as on the police department. So, you know, my heart is there. But at the same token, I know at the city council level, we also have to make tough decisions sometimes that aren't necessarily welcomed or fully understood. But they're made on the basis of what is good for the community on the long-term basis, not a short-term emotional basis. And I guess my concern is, you know, some of the questions that have been raised this evening are very good ones in terms of can we write a resolution that that gives our police department the power that they need to enforce it? And, you know, how do we best move ourselves forward being better equipped to deal with the types of issues that we could very be dealing with at some point?
Your concern is very legitimate, and it brings up a really good point. Right now, as things stand, as I said, it's my opinion that the city has designated a public forum for the expression of speech. And if, you know, the police's hands are, if you will, tied in the sense that they can't go out and remove any expression of speech based on the content or viewpoint. So Nazi party puts up some sign that's reprehensible, tough, you're going to have to live with it. Because it's, any removal or regulation would be content or viewpoint based. There, you know, I mentioned the limited public forum, which has been recognized by the courts and where the speaker, like in my example of the school, or the type of speech, say like a gazebo is open to musical events, that is a type of speech where, okay, that type of expression can occur there, but not others. And some cities have adopted policies trying to establish limited public forums for limited purposes. And that's getting into something very much more complex. And probably, you know, responding to the question about inviting challenges, trying to craft rules around the creation of public forums where you're limiting who can speak or the type of speech or can be very challenging. But it is something that can be done, where you can have some level of regulation. I think what you would have to do if you're going to try and do that with respect to city infrastructure is first take action to close the designated public forum that is unrestricted, and then establish a policy on limited public forums. And, you know, that's something that the council could look at. That's something that would take some more time, but would be sort of that middle ground, if you would.
Yeah, I think you hit it right on, from my perspective too, Bronson, in terms of there are a lot of underlying issues that come to light in today's society that, you know, before, we really never stopped and analyzed as thoroughly as we probably should have. But things present themselves, and that's when we have to make some of these difficult decisions. And we can always be making fine-tuning amendments to the resolutions that are made. But, you know, the underlying concerns is over time, what happens if that bridge becomes, you know, if we don't take action? What happens if we start having similar demonstrations and protests as Portland is having or somewhat similar? That then become more significantly a liability as far as traffic and accidents. And I think as a council, we have to look at all those issues. It's not just any narrow viewpoint or focus when we make these decisions. It's much bigger than that. So I guess, you know, those are just some of the underlying concerns I have with all of this, and that it's never about ribbons per se. It's about the policies that we lack at a given point in time that come to need to address and discuss.
So then do we stop public speech altogether? I mean, you know, people could probably gather down at the amphitheater and make that a legal spot to gather and talk because it's places where we put movies on in public air. So where does it stop? Where do we stop limiting free speech, right? So those are also issues that we need to look at and address.
Exactly. I think that's what we need to roll up our sleeves and look at where are safe places that people can gather and have free speech and discussions. You know, as the community grows, how can we address all of those feelings and everybody's perspectives? You know, we aren't a singular focused community. So how do we let everyone be heard? And how do we grow from the small community that we started as to, you know, where our future, whatever our future holds, but giving everyone that safe platform that isn't necessarily alongside a heavily traveled bridge?
Well, I would agree.
Right, but the peace of mind, the peace of mind there is that, you know, no matter what, we can meet and go over a resolution similar as of now to look at it again, too. So it's not like, you know, postponing it or making a decision not to do anything or anything like that is the end of it. So it's.
Something I'd like to pass along. In looking at the citizen comments that came in, they're very, very good. And, you know, and as I read them, it tells me that we're blessed to live in a community like La Center, where we have so many citizens that support our veterans and support law enforcement. But in each of those letters that came to us, no one really addressed the the possible issue of offensive signs being displayed on the bridge and the subject of safety driving on a bridge that's got a lot of, just littered with dirty old cardboard signs. And I've been able to talk to about 18 citizens just in my walks around town here within the last few days. And that was interesting. Not everyone agreed on the yellow ribbons. Ninety percent supported them. The, but everyone did agree that we needed to have some kind of controls. They all expressed a concern about how the bridge appearance could deteriorate if we let that thing go crazy down there. And I thought that was interesting. So when you have a chance to talk with people, have two-way conversation, you pick up a lot more information. And I think we have to keep that in mind. I'm a very strong supporter of yellow ribbons and blue ribbons. People who know me know that. I've even put ribbons out on the bridge on two occasions, and I found that to be personally very rewarding. But we are growing. Everyone knows La Center is growing. Clark County is growing. The Portland metro area is growing. And I think it's just inevitable that one day certain ribbons or signs or whatever they are are going to show up on the bridge. And if that were to happen tomorrow, what would we do? I don't know if that's been thought through. And that's why I'm glad we're talking about this this evening. I mean, the last thing I want to see is an anti-police handmade sign going up on the bridge placed next to a blue ribbon. Or I don't want to see one of those radical, extreme political signs done in black felt tip or spray paint. I don't want to see one of those go up on the bridge, or more go up on the bridge. And I think this is something that we really have to think about. I want to ramble on for a little bit more because there was a letter from one of our citizens, and it moved me. And she talked about the ribbons. And I'm going to read a couple passages to you here. And she said, what would be even better is if we had the US flags flying 365 days a year. And then she went on to say, it makes me so happy when I come into town and see all those flags flying. And that got me thinking that, you know, perhaps yellow ribbons aren't the only way to support our veterans in the major branches of our military. Maybe we can do more with that. Maybe we can even go so far as consider a monument. And maybe a monument in the middle of the roundabout where everybody would see it. But I don't think we should be locked in on yellow ribbons necessarily. And I see this as a possible opportunity for us.
I think it's a huge opportunity for for us as a community to come up with some very creative ideas as to how we want to, you know, take this forward, how we wish to truly honor our veterans and those who serve. That can be something as beautiful as a statue or monument. There are a number of different ways we can do this and make it truly meaningful for everyone. But as the community grows, I think we also have to be very open to recognizing that our opinions aren't always going to be the same. And we have to welcome all types of individuals to the community and being willing to listen and grow with those differences in mind. And how do we get there? You know, continuing this great community that we have, you know, being open-minded and we've got youth that are amazing, and they're leaders, our future leaders, and they've got totally different ideas than we do. And I would welcome their input on the topic, too. You know, what would they envision as truly being honoring of our veterans and those who serve? You know, getting a broader perspective than, you know, just a particular group? You know, how do we better reflect our entire community?
Great comments. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Bronson, for your presentation and answering the questions. I appreciate your work on this. Are there any other discussion, any other discussion by the council this evening? Again, this is what I
Again, this is what I was hoping to accomplish is to just get some dialogue going. Try to understand, you know, what the exposure is to the city, how we can address that exposure and how we can move this issue forward. Again, I appreciate all the public comment that we received this last few days. I know a lot of people are passionate about this. And I think that's a good thing. But I do think we have to open up the discussion and continue you know, be more inclusive and trying to bring some kind of resolution to this and come forward with some good solid policy. So.
Mayor, I would like to move adoption of Resolution 20-454, a resolution prohibiting the expression of speech on city infrastructure. And I would also like to encourage our entire council and our community to keep this dialogue moving forward and to build upon it and add amendments as we need to and address the underlying issues.
A second.
Sorry, counsel member, Ms. Servini, I did not catch the first part of your.
I said, Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 20-454, a resolution prohibiting the expression of speech on city infrastructure. And I would like to have the city attorney continue to examine the questions that were raised this evening.
I do have a second.
A second.
Okay, I moved that second vote to adopt Resolution 20-454, a resolution prohibiting the expression of speech on infrastructure and to continue to examine the issues that were raised in the city council discussion on this issue this evening. Could I have a real call vote, please, clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Stimmel?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Strobin? Councilmember Strobin, are you there?
He was traveling this evening. He must have dropped off.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Strobin on, we have a tied vote. Two in favor, two opposed. Bronson, again, it appears that we have lost councilmember Strobin, again, told us at the beginning of the meeting that he's going to be traveling to Nevada this. I'm sorry, I was muted. I'll start over again. Question to Bronson. Bronson, councilmember Strobin has seemed to have lost contact with the meeting. He told us at the beginning of the meeting tonight that he'll be traveling to Nevada in his motorhome. And if he was to drop off, that to continue the meeting without him. So now we have a tied vote. It's my understanding that this will be an opportunity for me to vote.
That's correct.
Okay. So in the absence of councilmember Strobin, I will vote to the affirmative and vote yes. So the motion carries three to one, three to two, excuse me. Again, I want to thank the council for having this discussion this evening and opening up the dialogue and taking a very balanced and more of a complete approach to the way we're going to be addressing these issues going forward. So again, thank you and thank you, Bronson.
So Mayor, I'd just like to clarify some follow up if I could. And that is that I'm being directed to continue research on the city's ability to create limited forums. Specific questions were whether or not private citizens can place flags. I'm assuming we mean United States flags, state flags, that type of flag. And whether or not that would open up a forum or whether or not the city itself could place yellow ribbons or engage in that type of expression of speech without creating a public forum. So there are those two specific questions raised. And then a more general look into our ability to maybe strike that middle ground with some type of limited public forum. Is that the direction that I should proceed in?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I understand it, Bronson. And again, we can continue.
Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, you're back.
Oh, yeah, I could hear you guys. You guys couldn't hear me the whole time. I had to pull off the road and call back in.
Okay. Well, now we have another issue, Bronson. Taken, he's back. I think the resolution's been. You have an opinion, Bronson?
As to your, what you could do at this point?
Yeah, now that councilmember Strobin is back.
Right. So the resolution was adopted. There there is a, you know, essentially as a motion for reconsideration.
Okay. Could that council have to do that then, Bronson?
Yes, sir.
So the council could make a motion for reconsideration now that councilmember Strobin is back. Along with this, councilmember Strobin, I hope you're parked so we don't lose you again.
Nope, I am fully parked. Pull off the side of the road.
Okay.
I move that we reconsider now that we have councilmember Strobin available.
Second.
We have a motion to reconsider the motion now that councilmember Strobin has returned to the meeting. A motion and a second. Again, I'd like to give a roll call on this because it's so hard to hear over the with this format. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Stimmel?
No.
Councilmember.
Are we doing, are we doing the roll call for the vote or are we doing for the reconsideration?
We have to move on the motion to reconsider first.
Right, the motion has been moved and seconded for reconsideration because someone dropped off, the vote was taken, it did pass, but he is back. So I'm opening it back up to the council again for reconsideration. I'll just start over, clerk.
Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Stimmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Been moved and seconded, the motion carries unanimously. Now we're back to the original motion. Do I have a motion for Resolution 20-454?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 20-454, a resolution prohibiting the expressions of speech on city infrastructure. And I would also like counsel to direct Attorney Potter to address the issues that were raised in the meeting consisting, I've forgotten, Potter, can you reread those or do we?
You don't need those. Just the resolution itself.
All right.
Very good. Again, clerk, can I have a roll call vote?
There is a second?
I'm sorry, a second please for the resolution.
A second?
It's been moved and seconded to for adoption of Resolution 20-454, a resolution prohibiting the expression of speech on city infrastructure. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Stimmel?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Strobin?
No.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Okay, this time the motion fails. Three to two. Okay, well, that was a little unusual, but I wouldn't have felt right with Strobin falling off. Okay. Counselor, again, I want to thank you for your discussion this evening. I think we took a you know, the approach is good. I'm sure this conversation will continue. Bronson, I appreciate all your work on this. With that, we'll move on.
Mayor, it's just, I want to be clear that I'm doing what the council wants me to and is that to continue those items of research that we just discussed?
I'd still like to see that because we might have to deal with this in the future, like Mr. Boff said.
I agree with that as well. Of course, it would be nice to regulate that if somebody comes up and, you know, fouls our bridge, but nevertheless, I think free speech is important and had to vote as the citizens who elected me asked.
Okay, yes, Bronson, I think we will continue to do the research and we'll present it at a future date. Thank you.
Mayor, would we want to do a work session on that?
If the council would prefer? Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good call.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get that scheduled. Very good. We have one more item on the agenda this evening. It's under new business and it's the La Center Police Department Assessment Staff Report. And this evening, Mr. Jeff Swanson and Chief Richardson will be presenting. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Just to put Robert's Rules of Order away here and get our slide deck up. Bear with me a moment while I work with the technology here. Okay, and hopefully you can all see that.
Looks good.
Can you full screen it, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I did. Is it showing up full screen for you?
Well, I'm seeing table of contents, too.
Okay.
You can unlock it.
Here, I'll I'll try something a little different here. Close that. Okay, how's that?
That's better.
More better.
Okay. All right, so tonight you have myself and retired chief of police Bob Richardson on with us. And we're going to talk about the La Center Police Department Assessment. And I'll move through the slide deck here. So first, I'll introduce our consultant team and what our qualifications are to do the work. I'll talk about the project background and the context. I'll talk about the project itself and then I'll talk about what the projected costs are for the project. So first off, our subject matter expert on law enforcement is Bob Richardson. He has more than 40 years in the industry. He holds a master of public administration from USC and a bachelor's in criminal justice from Cal State Long Beach. He is certified in Washington State through the Criminal Justice Training Center's Middle Management Program. He's been through executive education at Harvard University. He has a long career in California and has received certification in California. He's been chief of police in Battleground, Washington, a commander in the City of Irvine, California Police Department. He was an investigator in the military police in the United States Army. A member of the International Association of Police Chiefs and the Washington Association of Chiefs of Police. He's been a board member on Clark Regional Emergency Services Agency or CRESSA. He's been a member of the Clark County Law Enforcement Council, the Correctional Advisory Commission and the Clark County Juvenile Justice Council. So Bob is no stranger to law enforcement in the state of Washington and in our communities, especially in North County. Myself, my role is doing statistical analysis, academic writing, conducting community outreach and community involvement and doing policy and operational development as well as some project management. I have a PhD in ABD status from Portland State University in the field of system science with an emphasis in economics. I hold master's degrees in system science and in economics from Portland State. I have post-baccalaureate and graduate certificates in computer modeling and simulation and environmental and resource economics and hold a bachelor's degree in economics, all from PSU. I've been city manager of the City of Battleground, director of economic development at Clark County. I've served on faculty at Portland State University in the Business School in the Economics Department. And I'm a member of the International City County Management Association, amongst other things I've done in my, in my career. The project itself stems from discussions that we've had in some work sessions earlier in the year. As we've talked about La Center's general fund revenue sources and the transition that's been occurring since 2016 when the Calh's tribe opened a gaming facility on the city's periphery. Recent budget cycles have relied on one-time revenue sources such as development-related transfers and reserves to balance the budget. Council has expressed that this is not a sustainable track to be on and has indicated desire to balance the ongoing expenses with the ongoing revenues. And I know you've seen this graphic that's on the slide a number of times sketched out on whiteboards as we've talked about structural deficits and how those impact city finances in the long run. The city has been reviewing other departments over the past few years. This has resulted in changes to align the service demand that affects these departments with the available resources. And so some of these changes have included looking at community development. We had Mccutcheon and we had Mr. Paul Lewis conduct work looking at the cost of service and assessing departmental business of businesses done in the community development department. And these are driving changes in our code, in our fees and charges and cost recovery and in how we coordinate the work of community development across the city and its departments. In public works operations, personnel realignments resulted in a flattening of the organizational structure. This allocated more resources to putting services on the street while holding the line on cost. And water treatment operations, some organizational changes resulted in more highly qualified operations and supervision using fewer personnel. And in the finance department, there's an ongoing alignment of functions. And in the finance department, there's an ongoing alignment of functions under the supervision of the new administrative services manager. And this is expected to increase service levels and improve efficiencies using existing city resources. I'm getting my slide to work with me here. There we go. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Richardson. And he's going to talk about the changing nature of the law enforcement business, both the external environment and how businesses conducted. So, chief?
Thank you. I hope you can hear me talking tonight. I'm actually down in Arizona. It's a hundred and ten degrees, but it's a dry heat, so it's not hot. That's what they tell me. Well, obviously, we all know, especially in the last couple of months, that the changing nature of law enforcement, you don't just have to look at what happened in Wisconsin recently or Minneapolis, Minnesota with George Floyd, and you can see the impacts that these things have nationwide now. You can have an event happen in Wisconsin, and it will cancel the NBA games, and people will protest and riot. And in the in the matter of George Floyd, if you remember, people had a big conversation about the chokehold and policy and the fact that within changing policy usually takes the department, depending on its size, several months to even years. People were changing their policy regarding what they call a chokehold. It wasn't a chokehold, but what people call a chokehold with a matter of twenty-four hours, twenty-two hours, people were were changing policy. You see a lot of state legislators now commenting in the newspapers in Washington State about next year is going to be the year of police reform in the state. And generally, what that means is more training requirements that the state will mandate on local jurisdictions without providing the money or the capacity for you to accomplish that. You have court cases that have happened over the last couple of years that require officers to get search warrants, which take officers out of the field more and more. You have legislation that people are talking about decertifying officers and strengthening the discipline process in the state of Washington, which is going to mean more litigation, not only between the employee groups, but in the city, but through other parties. And you're going to see training requirements that are going to change. They're already talking about adding more peer intervention training, which is something that California did after Rodney King years ago, implied bias training, additional de-escalation training. And these training mandates are in addition to the twenty-four hours that you're required now to have for every police officer that's employed by your agency. Police agencies are already faced with trying to maintain and use force and use of force training, crisis intervention training, firearms and tasers, arrest control, legal update, as well as all the other specialty assignment training that you have to have regarding whatever special assignment you have. The training requirements, especially for smaller agencies, limit the amount of available time that officers have in the field, and it's going to cost you more and more overtime as that officer in the field that needs to be trained is either going to attend on his day on, and you're going to have to fill behind him to manage your patrol, or they're going to go on their day off, and you're going to also have to fill overtime for them. And if there's any traveling, you still have per diem and those kinds of things you're going to have to factor into. So the world's changing rapidly, and I think I could go on to the next slide, and we can talk a little bit more about what's going on. But obviously, risk and liability are big things nationwide. I can tell you that there's a big push to end qualified immunity for police officers that's going to increase litigation costs for cities. Whether the officer is right or wrong, people are going to litigate it, and it doesn't matter if you prevail it into the day. You have expenses that you have to incur when you litigate things. And it doesn't matter whether or not that employee has to go out and buy insurance of some kind to protect himself, or the city provides it. At the end of the day, those costs are going to get passed on to the taxpayer in one way or the other. And the other thing we're dealing more and more with, and you see it day to day, is just the public perception of policing. People are more likely to challenge police officers' decisions in the field. They're more likely that officers have to use force to get people to comply. And you have the, obviously, the cell phones that are out there and the demand for more and more technology such as body cameras. And one of the things that people are talking about mandating in the state of Washington are body cameras. I can tell you, I just looked at a recent cost for Vancouver PD, and your body camera is relatively inexpensive. I equate body cameras to razor blades. I'll give you the razor, and then I'm going to charge you for the razor blades, and that's where I make my money. Well, body cameras are basically the same thing. I may give you the the body camera, or I'm going to discount the body camera, but you've got to pay the storage fees at the back end to maintain all of that. Currently, body cameras, about seven hundred dollars is both of the average body camera cost. And then you're going to have to take on top of that about thirty-five hundred to five thousand dollars a year per officer for your storage fees for all that video. In addition, all that video that you're going to collect, you're going to have to have an employee who's going to have to redact that for all the public records requests you're going to get. And the prosecutor's office is also going to have to have additional employees because every case that's presented to the prosecutor, more than likely, they're going to want to see the body camera video of all the officers there prior to filing the case, which is, again, more cost, which is ultimately passed on to local government. And finally, it's just the agency scale that we want to look at, you know. The men and women of La Center are hardworking, very personalized service. But you also have to think of it, can you maintain what you have now? Can you maintain compliance with all the laws and legislation that are coming down the pipeline? In addition to that, you've got all the, not only the additional training costs, but you have the ability, you have to recruit and maintain your officers and and pay them equivalent to what other agencies their sides are making. And to give you an example, Vancouver PD right now, just as of today, has twelve vacancies. And I'm sure that Sheriff's Department's got at least another twelve. So really, in reality, there are more vacancies, and departments are having more difficulty hiring qualified applicants, and you have to compete with that same pool. So when you lose officers, especially smaller agencies, it's very hard for you to adapt very quickly. And so I think we need to look at the how the, what are the best practices in the department and how we can streamline services if that's possible. At the end of the day, our goal is really to just provide the city of La Center with professional law enforcement services to which you decide you want and, you know, what you're willing to pay for those. Because at the end of the day, the budget does drive, you know, your police department, and it does take a big percentage of your general fund. And that's really all I have of comments right now. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I'll continue on here and we'll talk about the project itself. There really are two phases to doing a project like this. The first phase is doing analysis of a department. And then the second phase is implementing the direction received from policymakers. In this first phase, we would acquire and analyze La Center PD calls for service. We'd look at the activity levels. This includes the type, all the time of day, whether there's mutual aid involved. And we would develop a model based on a twenty-eight to thirty-day model run using the data. So we could see what does an average month in the life of La Center Police Department look like based on the data. And using that analysis, we could provide an assessment of the current level of service need and develop options to address that need, as well as look into the future and forecast based on population growth, land use changes, and other factors, what the needs of the city are going to be going into the future. So the next step would be to have a check-in with the council. We'd have a workshop, and we would present the analysis and the data, and we would present some options for the city council to consider to address service level needs. We'd include some cost estimates, and we would develop and present a public involvement plan. So some possible options. Really, in this kind of assessment, you can look at everything from no changes to what you have to just the minimum level of service that would be provided by the Clark County Sheriff's Office per state statute and everything in between, including shift reconfigurations, contracting out, additional personnel, lots of hybrid options. So there's a lot of possibilities, but we would look at the data and we would look at the forecasts and develop those options on that basis. After that council workshop, we would conduct some community outreach to gather input and feedback from our community stakeholders and citizens, and then come back to the council for another workshop with recommendations. We would recap the public input and propose those recommendations and assist in the prioritization of options. The next phase then would be dependent entirely on the policy direction of the council. We would work with you to implement those priorities. And so this would involve any consultant work, as well as city staff, city attorney, and all time and materials associated with those costs for, which are unknown at this point. Estimated cost to conduct the project, it's for this analysis phase of the project, is estimated to be twenty thousand dollars. Chief Richardson and I will conduct this phase of the project on an on-call, an hourly basis, which would be not to exceed this amount. The costs, again, for the implementation phase are dependent on the policy preferences, priorities, and directions the city council would be determined at that time. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to take any any questions for myself, Chief Richardson.
Yeah, Jeff, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, first of all, the credentials are great. I have I have a couple of questions to this, though. Did you and the chief there, you guys worked together, the city of Battleground?
We did, yes, sir.
Okay, so my question is, is how do we bring in people that we've worked with? Shouldn't we be bringing in people that don't know each other and such? This way we can get an unbiased opinion or study?
I I don't think you'll get a biased study necessarily from either either us or from an outside and someone who's less familiar with the jurisdiction. I think a couple of considerations might be the cost to conduct such an analysis and the timing to engage somebody who's from outside the area. And as you look at the options that you might consider for different levels of service, it is helpful to have somebody like Chief Richardson, who knows all the other jurisdictions well in the event that you, say, wanted to contract with another agency to provide services.
Right, I just, you're a consultant yourself, and then the chief is somebody you'd worked with before. And you're on the city staff, and you answer to the mayor. And to me, that 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 doesn't really represent an actual true unbiased report because then we could be swaying heavily to what people's agendas are. So I I personally, that's that's the only issue I have with it, is that we're not using a source that is completely free of any friendships or work partnerships at that point.
Okay, I think it's a fair point. I can tell you that my role is really to synopsize Bob's analysis. So while I have the working relationships within the city, my role is really to to write a paper and draft up some slides.
And I just want to be clear that I'm not an employee of Jeff's. I'm my own employer. This is not the only city that I've had a proposal in with. I'm actually doing work right now with a city up in the Seattle area, and I can tell you that I'm not biased. And I come in with an open mind. Obviously, I do know some of the players. I know the chief, Denny, and I know how the record system and the CAD system work in Clark County. I know what data is available. So in a sense, you're actually, you know, saving money using somebody local just because I know where the the gate is. Where somebody else come in from the outside, and they're going to have to spend that time trying to figure that out, and they're going to charge you for it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for either Mr. Swanson or Mr. Richardson or Chief Richardson, I should say? I appreciate your presentation, gentlemen. I'll just turn it over to the council for any discussion you might have amongst yourselves or questions or comments.
I'm pleased to see that there are what I want to say, multiple outcomes with this, including doing nothing. I think that's that's important. And we have that to compare against the other the other outcomes. So as you know, I'm a I'm a numbers guy, and I look forward to getting getting information like this. So I think it will be very, very helpful. I think we need to we need to have some options out there since there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of what's happening with the card rooms. I don't, in a worst-case situation, I don't think that's the time to be looking at these kinds of numbers. I think we need to move ahead and and do it now. And people often say, well, you need to have a Plan A or a Plan B and so forth. And I think this is good, this will be good information to have on hand. Whether we use it or not is another issue, but I think we should have it.
Doug, and I totally agree with you. I I do agree with that part of it. The only problem I had is what I stated earlier. That's it. It it was not our community, our consultant for community director, and then somebody that was previously worked with coming into this study, I would be one hundred percent for it because I agree. We definitely need that information and the numbers, right?
Yeah.
And looking at options.
And your point, your point is very well taken because historically in other places, strange things can happen. So I think your question was a good one.
You know, I I agree, this study probably needs to be done, but Chief Richardson brings up a good point. He knows where the data is. We're not going to spend money on a scavenger hunt.
You're muted, Liz. Liz, you're muted.
Sorry, gang. Chief Richardson also well understands cities that are facing significant budget cuts and how to look at every angle in terms of how we make things work within the city confines that we have, what we look for, what types of changes we need to. We've done it with every other department. It it behooves us to look at the police department and do it quickly. It's long overdue. I'd hate to see us dragging our feet any further. Things are, our financials certainly aren't improving. And I doubt that into twenty twenty-one, they will get much better.
You know, when when we talked about that budget shortfall, I think it was the one of the annual work sessions we had, we tried to have discussions about mutual aid agreements and contracting. And it turns out, none of us are experts in how policing takes place in in small cities. So we kind of requested to have some analysis done, and I'm really happy to see this. I think we sort of need it in order to make educated decisions if if we end up making changes. Like Doug said, we could do nothing, and at least we'll know kind of what an expert view is of what our options are. We weren't kind of clear on what what were typical options for a small city. So I I think this is a great idea.
Okay, thank you for your comments, counsel. You don't have any other comments or questions for the consultants? Got a motion?
Mayor, I move this will approve the appropriation request for the law enforcement level of service assessment for the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Second?
A second. It's been moved and seconded for the city council to approve the appropriation request for law enforcement level service assessment in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Have a real call vote, please.
All right. Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Semmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
No.
Councilmember Servany?
Yes.
The motion carries four to one. Four in favor, one opposed. Okay, very good. Again, thank you, and I'd like to again thank Um, and I'd like to again thank Chief Richardson and, and Mr. Swanson for their contribution. That concludes our evening, our meeting for this evening. Uh, if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So move?
It's been moved to adjourn. All in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Poked.
Thanks, everyone.
Motion carries. Great evening.